Okay, welcome everybody to the work session of Wednesday, November 8th, 2017. First thing on our agenda is a proposed 2018 preliminary budget. We have our controller extraordinaire here, Rob Garys. So uh, so you're up.
So um. We've got the the second stage of the budget, the preliminary budget, so um. When we last met, the last version was the tentative version. That reflected the department heads' requests, uh, the administration's modifications, and then ultimately the town board changes that they made to that. Since that version of the budget, we then um, I presented a couple of weeks ago, some slight modifications to the budget. I don't know if anybody wants me to go through them one by one, um, I provided them to you before. Basically, we adjusted a revenue number for the building permits, which was reflecting the change in the title surveys that we had. On the expense side, we altered some of that. We added $7,000 for the indexing. $7,000 to the appropriation for NCCMC to allow for the indexing of the meetings. A couple of stipends that we had left out that were included in the CSEA contract, um, that we had to add. We added back in some money for um, some of the consulting, outside consultants, for some of the possibly the master plan projects. And um. We added some money back for the time clock that was also part of the um, the CSEA contract, so there's an initial setup fee and there's an annual or a monthly cost associated with that. So, we're going to, I guess, set the public hearing this evening based on the preliminary budget. That'll be on November 28th. And I'll give the the whole speech with all the charts and explanations at that point in time.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Oh, good.
I expected like forty-five minutes with you, that's great.
Well, it's, there's slight changes, I mean, we.
We were with those numbers for two months, so.
One question, well, I'm sorry guys, one question. How much again did we recalculate our expected generation of dollars by changing that fee?
Fifty-five.
Uh, about fifty-five thousand dollars. Oh, and I forgot to mention, it was um, we did add some money back in for a part-time employee in the building department that was potentially a part-time building inspector, was that Joe?
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Rob. Okay. Next, I think you're done, right? Unless you want to stick around?
Bond.
Oh, the bond resolutions, I'm sorry, right, 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 right. Right. Proposed bond resolutions, Rob?
So again, today we are, I think, meeting to set public hearings for those under the permissive referendum that's required.
Yeah, actually, it's not gonna be, yeah, so it's not gonna be today, it's going to be on the fourteenth, but this is our our opportunity to.
Discussion, a chance to ask any questions.
Questions and clarifications.
I mean, so um, I'll just give you a brief, um, I know I've given it to Rob, I'm not sure if I briefed the rest of the board on the process. So we've identified all the projects. I sent that list to our bond council, they have now prepared, um, that are in your packets, all the resolutions, um, for all the bond issuances. The big project, the downtown project, has been broken up by each component. The streetscape, the roadway, the infrastructure improvements. And so bond council provided that to us along with a useful life estimation for all of the projects. I've now given those to our financial advisor, who is going to prepare some mock-up potential payback schedules. Along with that, we prepare what's called the official statement, which I think Holly, you said you were involved with that in the firehouse. It's a pretty lengthy document, but it's what prospective purchasers of our bond will review to determine if they want to purchase our bond. So I think we have a thirty-day permissive referendum from the resolution, is that correct?
Uh, right, from the from the adoption of the resolution and its filing. Just one point of clarification, so there are some special procedural steps, but a public hearing actually is not one of them. So it's, the resolution gets noticed, it has to be adopted by a supermajority as the, as that memo lays out. It is subject to a permissive referendum, um, that's, and there's a roll call, roll call vote. So some curtailities, but um, that's essentially it, it's not a public hearing process.
So, well, let me, let me ask, because there, there were two components that I thought required a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Those were, so that's what, when the downtown project was broken apart, the water improvements and the sewer improvements, um, according to bond council, because those pertain to a special district as opposed to.
Ah, okay, those two, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So then we just do it all, even though we even have to do it all? I mean, does it make sense?
You can do it all in the same night, so you can open and close the public hearing.
So why not just, just my, my, right, I just wanna do it all, a public hearing.
You're gonna get the com, yeah, you're gonna get a video and get comments like that that night, yeah.
Get the comment.
Okay, great.
Right, answer any questions? So on, let's see.
Does it change, so those two particular votes don't need a supermajority, I mean?
No, those do.
So that's why he specifically broke them out so that he, we could follow the process depending?
Yes.
Or is it so you allocate the cost?
It's all.
Well, right, right, so because those costs, because the payback of those bond costs are gonna come from a special district, they had to be, uh, there had to be a public hearing for that.
And separate, and separate it out.
Right, separate resolution.
So since we normally keep things open for a certain amount of time, should we get it on earlier to knock the leg?
No, so we were gonna set the public hearing for the fourteenth. We were gonna conduct the hearing on the twenty-eighth. And then I figured we could take an approval on the way.
For a week, okay, perfect.
And what, just so it's clear, for, what's the referendum actually for, for the bond? For the resolutions of the bond council?
Not for the actual bond.
For the borrowing.
For the borrowing, for the bond itself. So if, and we've seen that process, so if within that thirty-day window, if a petition is filed with a right number of signatures.
Is it twenty-five percent of the?
I think it's five percent of the number that voted in the last gubernatorial election, I think that was like.
Jesus.
I think that number turned out to be like three hundred and six.
Hundred member.
From uh, three years ago, but any event, if you get.
To practically speak, may I say no, let's just pretend, some, they said no, when did you start at the project?
No to which uh.
No, we have the money in the uh.
Right, it's gotta come from somewhere eventually, I mean.
Hacks.
Yeah, but they just do it again, just keep on doing it.
Just keep on, is that what we would do, you just?
No to what though, no to?
If they say no.
They said no to the bond issuance, but which, 'cause you.
They said no.
All of them.
All of them?
Not the one.
Well, all of them, if they said no to all of them, the projects that have not yet been started or completed,
Would not quit.
you're, you're not going to.
We would do.
Right.
Um, the project that's completed, right, I mean, we're, we owe our contractor, so that would probably come into tax increase in the next year.
I think people should understand. The consequences, they can make educated decisions.
Right, I mean, you know, we have all along, it was um, we had the anticipation that we were gonna borrow for this project and exactly, you know, we have known for a few months how much we were.
No one's, I don't think, I'm just curious on process and what that means, so people should know that if.
No, I. Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Unhappy to consequences of taking actions.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, so um, all right, so this will be on for the fourteenth to set the public hearing for the, actually this is the twenty-eighth, and then we're targeting approval for twelve, twelve. Okay?
Are we gonna get the OS to work out?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Run away, go.
I'm done, okay.
There you go.
Drive safely.
Sure, no other questions, I'm here.
Nope.
Sure, wait, is there anything else we wanna talk to, I like it.
Thank you.
Take care, Rob.
Thank you.
Bye. Take it easy. See, not so bad.
Actually, Rob, I do it, no.
Um, let's see, uh, Sabrina is gonna come in when she's ready, so.
Yeah, I had a lot of questions about this.
About what?
Hudson, is that where in the Hudson Ridge Wellness Center?
Hudson, yeah, so why don't we go straight ahead of that?
Why don't we skip that till we can get it back?
Yeah, why don't we hold on to that for a little bit and let's go on. How about the discussion of the submitted comments for the public hearing on proposed local law with respective apes and also keeping chickens, do you want to do that?
Sure.
The only thing that came up in an email exchange on local law, chickens, I don't know if you were on it.
I was on it.
He's on.
I'm on it.
You're on it, okay.
I think the question was, uh, we had initially identified residential districts.
Right.
One acre and two acre, and the question was, what if you have a, an oversized lot?
And an undersized?
Right, so you have a one-acre lot in a half-acre district, and it doesn't quite address that in the right way. The existing code right now talks in terms of lot size and keeping of chickens. So to, to address that, and I, I think the better reference, the more precise reference is lot size.
Yeah.
Right, so we'll get rid of that potential.
Discretion.
Right.
So we'll, we'll say that, we'll revise the tax, so it'll say that uh, it's permitted in a residential district, six chickens, no more than six chickens if you have a, a one-acre lot. No more than twelve chickens if you have a two-acre lot.
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
And get away from the R1A, R2A, all right, so that'll, that'll be a change that we'll make.
That's appropriate.
Okay.
So does, is that change significant enough that it misses our voting date?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Is this still a reflection of the intent of the board? We're just now applying it to these, yeah.
Ticking it, yeah.
Changing, changing the reflection.
Right. So what is the voting date again?
Actually, next Tuesday, the fourteenth.
Okay.
Wow, so I can, and when does it take effect at the, of new, when is, when is it all?
On file.
We should bring, we should address his chickens.
We'll bring it.
A good audience. Can crack you up.
Okay.
Get a chicken.
I didn't get that actually, that was good.
I was just actually having people come in and check information, and it's.
I think those guys have used it.
Tightened everything ability? But when the department ready to start, you see them.
Maybe we should have it go into effect when we have the permit application. It's a permit application, but also putting together that um, that informational package, the one that we were doing.
Informational packet.
Yeah, so why don't we say this law go in effect uh, January thirty-first?
January thirty. Or thirty-fifth.
Yeah, long time.
Yeah.
Well, it just, you, you know, you need a, it's the end of November, right?
I don't know, they get their chickens now.
And that's already in the holiday season, the ones, yeah.
What if you want chickens for Christmas, for Hanukkah?
I, it's like. Um, we have to do, um, we, we just have to put together, um, we can put together the, the website references, or I can just go online and print off everything from the Cornell Cooperative. Yeah, or what we can even, what we can do is we can, if you wanna, can reach out to Cornell Cooperative, because the guy who's actually in um, Yorktown, right, at the intersection of the Deconic and one thirty-four, you know, the place called Fable? Yeah. So he has like two hundred chickens. Oh, 'cause that's not who she referred me to, she referred me to the guy from Orange. But he, we. No, 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 I'm not. Not for, not for getting rid of them, but. No, no, not for getting rid of them, no, no, the, the person who too deals with it within the Cornell Cooperative, who does all the trainings and stuff like that, was the guy from Orange County. Perfect. Perfect, yeah, I think it is that guy, because they actually come in and, since he's a new farmer, they've been really helpful to him. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, so I was just thinking that maybe we would set it up where we would do, um, if he would let us do tape of presentations, to run a presentation, tape it, put it on the website along with all the other links for the Cornell Cooperative. Um, and we could do a couple of them actually, just because, you know, especially going towards the string.
I have a question actually.
Okay.
What about the um, people that have it already? There's a lot of people that have chickens illegally.
Well, I'm hoping they come and complain.
They should come and get, yeah, they should come and get a, they need a special permit, they should come and get it.
Right, okay, and what about for somebody who's violated it? Gonna be retroactive or something with that?
People come in all the time for relief when they've got, you know, a deck or pool or something that's been built.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we retroactively get them. I don't think we retroactively get them.
That's the situation.
No, I'm talking about if somebody violated and they're facing charges.
Oh, you're trying, okay, so.
Oh, I can't, yeah, that's up to the prosecutor.
I think the process has to play out.
It's up to the prosecutor, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto.
Um, so, I'm sorry, so what date did we decide it's gonna be effective on?
You said the first.
I gotta rush it a little bit, January.
January, February, first.
Thirty-first.
That'll give everybody plenty of time and. And I don't think anyone's gonna be getting chickens for the holiday season and it's winter, it's cold.
I may get you one. But then you'd be in violation, you only have one.
You'd be so lonely.
So we're voting next week?
Chickens crack me up.
Yes.
Chickens.
November fourteenth. We really studied that well.
We did.
Somebody talking so loud.
All right, what's next, are we going to?
Do you want Richie to come in for building permits?
Well, is there anything else we need to do with vape?
I think we'll.
We're good to go?
I think we're good to go, all right. Do you have a charger?
And spades coming?
I do, absolutely, um, yeah, the only thing is, no, no, so in my top drawer, there's no.
I was.
Oh, good.
No, 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 don't hurt them.
No, 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 it's really, no, it's just, it's plugged into my computer, I'll be right back.
Do you want me to get it?
Take whatever, whatever the next thing is.
Okay, the next thing is uh.
The, the building permits.
Well, we had Richie there, right?
So we need, so we need Richie to come in.
So how about the balage, we're not gonna do anything, chit, balage home subdivision.
Are the spades here?
They're, they're, they're over there, so they're gonna come.
So you wanna grab them, or are they talking?
They're gonna come right after they're finished, I think they're probably still up.
All right, move on to next, what should we discuss?
What does anybody can, balage home subdivisions?
How about C-VAC request?
How about concerning local law?
We need Sunny for a conference, I never wanted to go to a conference or anything. Send their best proposed mark.
Let's talk about the farmers market two-year renewal, Lisa.
Gonna be no change with everybody. I think something we talked about was.
I think there are changes. I think there are changes with the dates for them.
Are they to capacity? Are they to capacity?
Well, whatever the dates are, they were okay with it.
For vendors.
Vendors. For vendors? Oh no, I don't think so.
So is it a need to address any?
No.
No?
As far as the farmers market. They, they were okay with the dates, they were fine with it.
So at the balage so, a home subdivision, my understanding when I read the packet is it's just basically the executional documents associated with the current decision.
Yeah, you see them all.
Right, there's nothing more complicated than that. I just, I separated it out.
All right, Richie, we got some really hard-headed questions for you.
Yeah, that would, nobody walks away with it.
Right, that's true.
Everything the same, six months.
If you were stuck with any of us, uh, deserted island, do it again.
Such a good answer.
Shut your eyes.
Good answer. All right.
All right, you're, that's us.
Okay, so let's see. Devise fee schedule.
Next time we're gonna have to put page numbers next to the topic thing, so I.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
I uh. This is such a big package.
Totally forgot page numbers, so that's mindful.
So my understanding is we're kind of in line with what everybody else is charging.
I realize.
Yeah, I don't know if we, I think, I don't know, you said it, we are in line with pretty much every other town.
There's no opportunity to raise it.
Not really, we're actually, it's a high.
That was good that you did such a thorough analysis.
Other ones, you know, but.
So listen, if we're, if we're aligned, then we shouldn't be.
We shouldn't be aligned?
Raising it.
No, we're aligned, I guess con, we shouldn't be.
No, Jones.
I just spoke to a lot of architects and people who are filing building permits and they said they see that us kind of where we should be.
Yeah. Okay, so, and I haven't gotten many, you know, I haven't gotten complaints in the house, I have gotten people coming in saying, hey, you guys are, you know, I think we also give a lot of service to people too, so I think they appreciate that.
Okay, so then there was one part that you were, you thought maybe there was some room for us to make an adjustment.
It's on the uh.
The additional amount for the permit fees?
For the fifty percent, it's actually, we don't, we don't get a lot of renewals, um.
We don't, that was interesting, I, I don't think the board did us that.
Yeah, we don't get a ton of renewals, but um, right now we're doing five hundred dollars for three months on residential, uh, thousand dollars for six months on commercial, and fifty percent of the original permit fee on additions and alterations. And that was the part that caught me a little bit by surprise when I was looking at that, 'cause I was like, well, that's kind of hurting people that are just doing alterations and additions. So, looking around, again, we're still at the higher end, but we don't, like you said, we don't get many, so we don't get complaints even when we do ask for renewal. But to make it a little more fair, I think, for the people that are doing additions that run into, you know, whether it's a personal problem or a contractor problem or something. I was looking at some other towns that do like a fifty percent of the original fee or a thousand dollars, whichever's less. So you're not ever going over that thousand-dollar mark. And that's for six months, most towns.
What is that fifty percent, what is that fifty percent usually? If you can give that number. I mean, is fifty percent usually three grand or is fifty percent usually six hundred?
It's, it's gonna fluctuate on every job, I don't think I have an average I would be. It can be anywhere from a hundred and sixty dollars on like a very small project up to five grand. I think it was the one that caught, that's the one that made me look at this.
That must've, what kind of project would a five thousand dollar?
That would be like a large renovation to a house. That would, you know, that would have triggered such a large initial permit fee.
In other words, a gut renovation.
Yeah, yeah, almost a whole total renovation. So, and then a lot of times those, you know, they run into that they're just waiting on, you know, special ordered glass for their fireplace and they can't get their CO, you know, so it's like to try to make them pay that much money for something that, it's just, you know, two months it'll be here, you know, it's just kind of.
Seems reasonable.
Rough.
Well, alternatively, why not institute something, some language that allows you discretion? Is that why?
That puts them in an.
It's still a lot.
That's why so.
I think they should treat everything.
Yeah, we talked.
But it is something as silly as, as something as.
That's it.
You can't, no.
Glass for it, no, no.
I guess.
Yeah, maybe look, you talked about discretion in some areas, about giving people maybe even like a longer, like if I was going six months
It puts them in an obligation.
and then maybe somebody like, oh, let's give that person eight months.
Yeah, that's a long.
How do you, yeah.
Okay, all right, just.
How do you justify it? So if, I figured do it black and white, this is what it is.
Okay.
And I think six months is probably more than enough time for most people. Again, like I said, I think we had one person that had health issues and it just turned out that, I think they went almost two years, you know, it was just over and over and just, you know, there's issues with the family, stuff happens. For commercial, right now we're a thousand for six months. They can do it twenty-four months on their original though. Their original permit is twenty-four months, not a year like a residential. So the only thing I was thinking was fifty percent of the original permit fee again, raised up to fifteen hundred for six months. Whichever's less again, it'd be the same thing. We don't run into many commercials that, most commercial people wanna get the job done, so we don't get very many commercial ones that are.
That's interesting.
That we see, you know, a commercial project, use it once, get done. You might run into it like with the larger projects, so with the hospital, that might be going in, that one might run into it, or you might run into it with Top Hill with the Chapel Crossings. Some of those products may run, but they're splitting theirs up, so I don't, I don't see it up there. They're splitting theirs into different portions. So we should hopefully be on track with them.
Okay, go ahead. You know, I got a complaint for a resident though recently, is they filed for a building permit, then I guess it was gonna be more, their financial situation changed or it was gonna be more expensive, whatever the work was gonna be. So they came back to try to amend their plans and they were told.
Two years, over two years later.
That they had to, that they lost their whole deposit, their whole fee and they had to redo the whole thing.
Well, we told they could. They could apply for fifty percent and cancel that permit out. That would, they, if it's the one I'm thinking of, that was either two or three years that they waited on that. And we also had to switch from one state code to two thousand ten to the two thousand fifteen code. So things have changed, so we had, you know, somebody did a review on that, you know, whether it bill or not, you know, somebody did a review on that years ago. So basically, we have to start over on that one anyway, for us. And if it's even gonna meet the new code. So it's a whole new project, so I mean, to let something sit for that long makes it very difficult for us to say, yeah, let's just renew it. I had one, one did the same thing, I had them apply. We worked, we try to work with people like that, you know, try. I know that they pay, so I will try to work as best I can with them on, you know, cutting out, don't put in the painting fee, you know, I mean, try to cut out the stuff that really wouldn't require a permit, would be gonna be a cost estimate then. And I think that's what that, one that, if it's one I'm thinking of, that was an issue.
Right, okay.
So we do try to work at it, I think that was like, I've had two of those in the last year or so that people have, there was a swimming pool, not a swimming pool. But same type of thing, they wait two years.
Right.
Luckily, the contractor was like, told that, you should have done it earlier, it was like, you know, there's nothing we can do.
You hear what's due to.
We did work with them on the beginning, so they didn't have to have their plans redrawn.
Six.
We just made sure that everything met the new code we looked at.
Right.
So um. And when there was a cancellation and a refund, that was also addressed in the town codes, that's another example of where it's black and white, there's really no discretion, you know, you can't deviate. Correct.
Okay.
So what I.
So um, how does the board feel about changing that fee structure for the additional amount? Did the alterations just bring it in? So um, will you guys take any care of it?
Thank you.
Will you guys leave? Okay, so this is. Okay, we're up to Balai. Okay, you are?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Take care.
Do you um, would you just let us know when Sabrina and Bill Spade are gonna go to the restaurant? We're chugging on where you are. Okay, great. Okay, um, all right, so Carrie, Balai, no, nothing?
Not many questions now.
So we're, it's gonna be on next week, the fourteenth for all the approvals, okay?
Great.
Terrific, thank you. Sorry, I keep you waiting.
We need the C-VAC request a lot more.
Yeah, so we don't have, we have no other questions on the northern fire, right?
No.
Yeah, C-VAC. So um, C-VAC approached us, asking whether or not the town would sponsor them in Niship. Now, this is sort of an interesting request, because the town actually doesn't have, offer Niship, we're not part of Niship for our own employees, we're self-insured through PAMCO. You know, United Health. But we can sponsor them, um, because we are a municipality, it doesn't cost the town anything and we're happy to extend health insurance, so.
And they asked me to do this, so.
Yeah, this is, it was a great idea, it's a great idea, so yeah. So the draft resolution's in here and we approve it on the fourteenth? Okay, and whatever other papers they need us to sign, whoever, you know, stumbled, this was great.
Yeah.
No cost, no cost to the town?
No cost to the town, and uh, a great benefit for uh.
No, but. So we're gonna vote on, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna see them tomorrow night, so we're gonna vote on it on the fourteenth?
On the fourteenth, but actually the draft resolution is in the packet, so if you wanna share that with them, you certainly can.
Will the, will the fire districts do that too, or is it just uh?
They could, but, I don't know.
I'm just looking at preparing lights.
Oh, okay.
Complicated topic.
It's, yes.
Yeah, right.
So, what's the answer to that question? What's, what's answer to Rob's question?
Can the fire districts do it? Um, they should look into it, um, I don't know why not.
They, just nobody ever has.
They have actually asked us to piggyback onto our.
They should, they should be able to.
Yeah.
C-VAC contacted the Department of Health on their own to figure out that this was an option, but I believe that the other fire districts can do it as well.
Right, so members of the fire departments have come to us in the past, the town, to try to be covered under our premiums, but because we're self-insured, it actually is not a big deal for them.
Well, it's make sure they get the message.
Yeah, well, this is, I mean, we didn't research the C-VAC, do it themselves, but we should check in, but to know that.
Do volunteers get any sort of health insurance free, do they volunteering enough?
No.
Was there, wasn't there legislation that was, that the governor signed?
Yeah. I'm sorry, what?
By confusing it?
He just signed legislation.
Yeah, there was some.
Did something about health insurance, right?
Yeah, 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 but that wasn't.
That was for, for cancer testing, certain things, yeah.
So wasn't, wasn't insured, so.
It wasn't regular health insurance.
No, so years ago it was passed that the members of the volunteer fire departments could take a pity back onto the municipal projects, but again, because we only pay a fraction of it as opposed to the full premium, that our premiums are actually pretty high, because we're self-insured, so. I, I, I know that there were a number of volunteer firemen, from firefighters from Chapel Park, who required about it and it was a little bit, they were able to even find that on the.
Maybe we can let them know that this might be an option for them, they should look into it.
Sure.
We take a little break while we wait for spring. Um, yeah, I think, are we, the questions regarding sidewalks?
Hours, there's a question about six hours versus.
Yeah, the, the, the timing on it, so, I'm sorry, let's see. We go back to the other packet.
Six hours versus a shorter time, right?
Yeah, it's just on the first page.
It was six hours after the final fall.
Yep, and not between the hours of.
Ten PM and ten AM.
Ten PM and five AM.
Right, yeah.
And we can, so the, there's a couple options. We can choose to reduce that six-hour period to two hours and just apply it to all of the town. Or as we've drafted here, we have the six.
Business district.
We have the six-hour requirement for everybody else and then a two-hour requirement for, you know, whatever specific streets we wanna impose that two-hour requirement on. So that's one option, another option is to do, instead of listing specific streets, we could say within a thousand feet of the train station or some other sort of buffer, that's another option. So there's definitely, there's a couple ways to go about it, so it's really, um, within your discretion to choose what you would like to do to address your concerns. So I know that's not helpful, but you know, there's, there's so many different ways and. So I know that's not helpful, but, you know, there's, there's so many different ways and I didn't wanna make the decision for it.
But I think there was, um, I think the issue was, was if it is snowing and it's accumulated above a certain height, I thought you, somebody was talking about New York City law?
Kira pulled it up.
Oh, Kira, you pulled it up, yeah.
Yes, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, though.
You don't live in New York City, though, like people can't take a subway to their store or walk to their store.
Right, it's different, yeah.
Yeah. No, but I think the, I, I think the idea was, is that there's a lot of people who walk to and from the train station.
Exactly, but you're putting then the business owners at risk who have to get in their cars and drive as opposed to in New York City where you can get in a subway or walk to your store.
No, no, I can't.
So that was the difference.
Are you doing the distance, you said a thousand feet from the train station you were talking about?
That was just like
I know, but I think you should delineate streets or, you know, because it's, it's, it has to be crystal clear.
Maybe we should
That might be, that might be the best way, I was just
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, that's true.
Yeah, but
Because actually, what I was commenting to Ed is that, other than outside the hamlet, like our sidewalks along one twenty, that's, that's the town's responsibility.
Right, there's not that many others.
Um, there, there really aren't.
In which case, I mean, do we want to, instead of delineating specific streets, we could reduce the six hours to two hours and just leave it at that? Would that address the concerns, making it more simple, or do we still wanna have two different standards?
One standard is probably easier.
Gonna split the baby and call it four.
We could do that, I mean, I looked at, um, codes throughout New York, they have two hours to forty eight hours, like the, the range of, you know, where people go is really, you can do whatever, whatever we need to do.
Two hours doesn't work.
Yeah, it's too, it's too short.
It is, really.
Short, yeah.
So we could just have one standard and say, four hours for everybody, and, and again, I think it helps if we add this, you know, not between the hours of ten and
Right.
ten P M and five, you know.
Five, five A M.
Right, you gotta, uh
Right.
So that means that five A M it starts ticking again?
Yes.
Which doesn't help mourning folks.
But people walk to the train station, so
Right, right. But the feet doesn't help anyone in the morning.
Yeah, well
That's when you wanna shovel.
It's till nine, then.
Right.
No, but you're still, you're still encouraging them to do it as soon as possible, you're just gonna get fined if you don't do it at a certain time. You know, that's what you should
Yeah, so by nine, if you do four hours by nine A M, if it's not done.
Yeah, the reality is, is, you know, you're, you're, can you
You still want them to do it.
The traffic still is, you know, is walking between six and seven, that's, you know, and everybody agree that two hours is, you know, too short, so
It doesn't, doesn't help them.
Somebody first has to get there.
Hopefully it'll
The thing is, sometimes roads aren't plowed at five A M.
It's in the way.
For people to get to their
I mean, if you, right, yeah.
The way, the way
Get to the store.
The way it works from a liability point of view, I mean, if it stops snowing at, I mean, let's say we have four hours from five A M, so they don't get to take it till nine. The bottom line is, if it stops snowing at twelve A M, and then they don't come in to shovel till
Eight.
They can have a problem, they can have some liability, because they've had eight hours, you know, from liability point of view, so the point is
But it doesn't stop them, some people before.
Just No, I'm saying, just 'cause you have a fine setting, starting at some certain point, people still gonna be take care of their sidewalks because of the legal liability.
And, and I, I think, I think having a mandatory minimum for a second time offender will make people acknowledge that they need to deal with it first time around, so they don't run afoul of the law and face a mandatory fine the second time.
I mean, the point I was saying, I agree, the point I was saying is you got civil liability, you got criminal liability, criminal being just fine, but the point, you have both that are
Yes, for the record, we're removing the incarceration torty piece of it.
Take all the fine.
But you are, there is a penal aspect to it as well as a civil aspect. And you can't just sit back and not, not clear your property because you think, you know, you got more time, I mean, if you're on notice, you gotta do it.
So then try four hours?
Yeah, we'll try four hours, but it's now, so we'll see how that works, and we could always revisit.
So four hours, one standard, and we like ten P M and five A M?
Yeah.
But you, did you come across language where they encourage people to do it as soon as, uh
How do you encourage, what would be the encouragement?
Most, most
Well, because you're not saying this is not the standard to like, you, you, you're not saying you don't have to do it till then, you're basically saying, this is when the fine kicks in.
So I saw it a couple different ways, um, every provision, I, or at least the majority, start when the snow ceases, right, like that, that makes sense.
This is right.
And then this additional timeframe of, okay, the fine doesn't, it kinda ceases between ten P M and five A M, that was in like maybe half of them.
Right.
The other half said, you gotta clean it up in six hours when the snow ceases.
Yeah, as long as we define what needs to be cleaned, what, you know, the distance and, and the area needs to be cleaned in timeframe, I think at the first snowfall, we should make sure we have enforcement out day one, so that the landlords, the tenants, the landlords know that, I mean, business, that if they run afoul, they get fined. So if you, instead of not doing anything about it, enforcing on day one.
So, wait, let me just ask you how that works, so say it stopped snowing at nine.
A M.
P M, P M, right, so, we're not requiring
Nine, P M.
So they have a couple hours before kinda that blackout period hits in, so then an hour, so then do they, at five A M, does, then they have three hours, or?
I think if five A M, they would have four hours, right, I don't think anybody's
Even though it's stopped, you don't tack on the hour before?
I don't think so, because think of that, from, just from a, an enforcement perspective, they, you know, what if I'm just thinking that would be hard to enforce to, to tack it on or to subtract the hours, right?
It's clear to me.
That's interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Then maybe, maybe it's worth it to spell it out that way.
Yeah, what the city does is it actually breaks out time periods, like, for example, between seven and five P M, you've got four hours.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you wanna think about four hours or maybe even less, because we wanna encourage it to be cleared if it's in the morning. Uh, then between five and nine P M, it jumps to fourteen hours. I'm quite sure I'm
I'm surprised.
I'm surprised it's that much.
It's a long time, yeah.
Uh, and then between nine P M and seven A M, it must be cleared by eleven A M.
They still give you four hours.
So four hours there.
I mean, they give thirteen hours.
I think we're headed to the same place.
You do.
Four hours, but not between the hours of ten, five.
Okay, so leave it be, four hours?
Four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, okay.
Okay. So, do you, you'll just tweak that one?
Yeah, absolutely, and as Hall said, you know, we could, we can always change this when she was talking about the vape law.
Perfect.
Yes.
This is not accomplishing the goals of the town.
Right.
This is something we can always revisit, so we can try it this way and see what happens.
Okay. Okay, um, so the next thing that we've got is the, um, farmer's market in a two year renewal, so the farmer's market approached us asking whether or not, um, we would extend their contract out for two years, um, there are two different timeframes in the farmer's market agreement, I just wanted to raise it with the board for a second. So okay. So when we expanded the actual time for the farmer's market, we allowed them to operate at the Chapel Clark train station from April fifteenth to December twenty third, outside, okay? Gary was very concerned about that, because his feeling was, is that if we have snow, we have, you know, the weather turns to climate, there's an icy condition, whatever it is, the farmer's market still wants to go on, he did not know, know necessarily that he was going to have the manpower, you know, we'll take him, we'll
To clear?
we'll salt, we'll sand, but I don't know that we're gonna have the manpower to be setting up barricades and setting up garbage cans and stuff like that. And so that, that was really his concern in the scheme of things. So, on page three of the farmer's market agreement, it talks about the fact that the town will set up and remove traffic barricades and garbage cans from markets at the train station from April one to October thirty first, because again, he just, he was a, he was concerned about committing in the winter months when he just didn't know what was gonna be on his plate.
October thirty first, we wouldn't continue to November thirty?
We, we are, and as long as the weather's okay.
Why, why do we say weather permitting, so we
Well, that's the, I, we just have to put some sort of
Yeah, caveat, man.
uh, caveat in there, just, just to do it, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention the fact that there's two different dates.
The problem is, weather permitting is not clear.
Yeah, and it doesn't
Well, that the farmer's market doesn't know if they're supposed to be picking up the garbage or
Right, but I think there was language in something else we were talking about, which was in the, basically Jerry Marshall's sole discretion. It was in, I can't remember what, was something in this packet, was it the sidewalk law?
I'm not, I'm not thinking of it.
Yeah, might have been the town where we would permit superintendent of highways or something like that.
Yes, that was in the sidewalk law.
But anyways, there's, there's, and then maybe it needs to, um, and I think that if it is going to be super snowy to the point that town staff is out there working really hard. Yeah, but the farmer's market still may wanna come, I mean, they've, they've come where, I know that they had it in the, um, the church when it was still snowy and stuff like that, but our guys were out there sanding, so they
It sounds indoor, it was different.
No, 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 this was, this was outdoor, they had it, and they actually had them set up on the, um, yeah.
I thought only the fish person in one table was outside.
No, 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 not during the winter market, when it was actually a spring market, they were, whatever it was, winter, and our guys were out sanding, salting, doing all this stuff, stuff, and there was like two inches of snow, but
Oh.
you know, on that, you know, in the mornings when it's like, you know, the snow is turning, and so our guys were out in force, the farmer's market was still out, we had cleared here, we had sanded, we had salted, they were ongoing, but we just can't bear the, we can't spare the staff to take and be picking up garbage cans and stuff like that, so it's not necessarily weather permitting.
No, no. Yeah, of course.
Um, and that was your big concern.
It's, it has to be unless or plows, you know, unless in the event of a snowstorm or
I know, but how do, how, so how do we clarify that in the provisions?
Does, does the farmer's market make money now, like where are they financially? Cause I think when we did this originally, it was just, uh, it was a trial run.
I don't know if there's, I don't know if they're actually making tons, okay.
They, they don't make a ton, but
Well, yeah, I mean, I think they're, they're profitable during the spring and summer, and they went to market was, uh, you know, it was a loss, and so it was
Yeah, not in the winter.
So do they contribute toward the town staff at this point, or no? And why do we have to foot, foot the whole bill? It's immunity. It's immunity, maybe.
Right, I know, so It's subject to availability.
It's how much money they give us.
The idea that we want it at the end of this language on page three, where it says, uh, April one through October thirty first, and from November first through December twenty third, subject to the availability of personnel is determined by
There you go.
at the sole discretion of
Yeah, it, it just has to be that, because, and, and we, we do this for them, um, in other instances where Fourth of July weekend, Memorial Day weekend, and Labor Day weekend, where we set up, we leave barricades for them, they can take and, um, and establish, you know, set them up if they may, um, need, um, you know, and then they can just take and cordon off the
So you're saying we can have some language that authorizes us to cancel the, in advance, so if we know snow's coming, uh
Tell me how you wanna, do you wanna have it at the town?
But you have to give them a notice, too.
Will do it unless, and then we can carve out something that gives Jerry discretion to say, no, I've got, I've got too many
Yeah, too many
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna
I think it's will do unless
Will do unless.
But it's a decent amount of work for them to get rid of the garbage and everything, as you imagine, so we wouldn't, we'd wanna at least give them
Is that something you like, we got a notice?
Yeah, because they're gonna have to bring additional people in, that's, so it's, it's not like you can make a, like a game day decision, because they need
Yeah.
Well, it's like twenty hours before.
No, yeah, I would say twenty four hours, you can't realistically make a decision before that, you don't know if it's gonna snow
Well, you may not know, you may not even know, right.
twenty eight hours before that.
Do we need to address that, or can we leave that to the good offices of Jerry and
I mean, you may not know that close either, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we
Yeah.
And then in five, we should take out the no open consumption of alcohol, all the beverages, like we did in Millwood, we had the beer and deadening, it was fun.
Yeah, and I don't think you, uh, I don't think it has to be twenty four hours, I think it'd be like twelve hours.
They want to disagree with that one?
No, is the way to incorporate that?
Mm. It says here, no open consumption of alcohol beverages, so just keep, so just check out and put an open consumption shall be permitted.
Or I don't think twenty four hours.
I wasn't getting twenty four.
Yeah, I was
Okay, okay.
Yeah, can, 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 can you, why, if we could get a special, was it a special permit allowed?
Is encouraged. Subject to applicable law.
Well, now they have beer distributors at the farmer's market.
Right, so
It's a subject to applicable
Was, was there a special regulation that allowed us to do it at Millwood for the, for the
Yeah.
They got a, a, an event license.
An event permit, yeah.
Yeah.
So why doesn't the, is it, could the farmer's market, you have a renewable
Is it restricted into the thing?
No, because it, it's, then it would be a liquor license, an event license is for like a one time or a specific event, and it expires, you can, you can one, you can only get up to
Right.
three or four years.
Yeah, so if they could do one or two during the course of
May be because the one time, because the number of three or four, five.
It's a one time, you can get three or four a year, they have to get a whole liquor license.
Maybe we should encourage them, maybe we should encourage them to have an event, I don't know what it costs for that, to have an event
With beer.
at the farmer's market where we can consume.
Well, the farmer's market, I doubt it will do it, but
So Ed, I would just say, subject to applicable law, you know.
It's very easy, yeah, something cider and beer.
Yeah, if, if they wanna do it, they can do it.
Yeah.
They're doing it anyway.
I was like, oh, oh, oh.
Well, they sell beer.
Yeah, so, cause you can't drink it.
You can taste it.
They sell open.
Well, you can taste it, is that tasting as drinking, is that illegal, is that illegal?
No, you can taste it, they do.
They do.
You can taste it, yeah, farmers, uh, physical, actually, yeah, it's something nice, right?
Is that, should I use that in my defense of my clients, Lisa? I was tasting, not, not drinking.
Yeah, the gas station Millwood has a keg, you could actually pour a beer, especially got a cup at the top.
Is it the gas station in Millwood?
Really?
Yeah.
Carson, what a good combination.
Yeah.
Got some churches, and all that.
I didn't look for the actual drivers, but maybe for lunch and stuff.
Um, what's the other thing I want to ask? The other thing is, um, there, there may be
Can Sabrina enter sooner now? Sabrina, please still.
No, no, it sounded like there was a lot of talk.
Yeah, I'll text her, but I think very
Can we trump them? Throw a word around?
Do you think there's something to trump up?
Well, because
Right, is it the agreement, or?
Yeah, because of the additional cost for them.
Okay.
Because you, you took a, but moving, trust is sufficient, and, 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 and just paying for garbage boxes, if you exist.
Right.
So, I mean, that would be the chief's call.
Well, that's open for discussion, I think. The general topic is open for public discussion. I know, the specifics of the housing.
Right, so, um, unfortunately, in light of, um, um, the times we live in and the fact that public assemblies near public roadways, maybe problematic, and that the chief of police may determine at some point in time that more security is needed. The question with all of these types of public events that take place in parking lots where cars are right there, um, that additional security measures, is it something that the town is going to absorb, is that something the event sponsor should be absorbing? I'm confused.
I think it depends on the event, right?
Yeah.
Well, so, but this event, the farmer's market, so if the chief determined that, for whatever reason, that he had to, whether it was more personnel or whatever it was, but there's gonna be an additional cost, is that the type of thing that for this event, the town should absorb, or should we be talking about
Well, and when again, is it like a public use of private funds?
Now, this
So like, for instance, when we did like the Millwood two hundred, that was, we were putting that on, that was our police that was
Well, we had sponsors.
need sponsors, but for like, let's just say, like the book fair, for instance, that's a more like a private event, it's not a town event.
Well, we sponsor it, we, we cut it police, so is that, does that differ?
And there's, a lot
Well, yeah, I think both
Well, we co-sponsored it, so we
We co-sponsored the book fair, and this is also a, a public town event, so I have no concern here about that issue.
Right.
Of total cost.
Okay. Yeah, 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 okay, that's good. Okay, that's good.
I know, it's
But we, we license this
I think that there's a, I think there's a lot of
Why do you say much permit, because we're licensing it?
It's private, yeah. We like, we license it, but we have no control over there, I mean, it's different.
Yeah.
It's different than the book fair, that we're not co-sponsoring it, yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't, we, you know, there was a, you know, a discussion about that and the town taking it over, but we don't
Could we, I, I, can we, can we, sorry, can we start with that, Sabrina?
Yeah.
Well, you
We still do the farmer's
Actually, we're talking about something.
No, I, I know, but I, I don't, I don't, it's too big a while.
You're bored with this conversation, right?
No, I know, it's too, yeah, it's too big.
I mean, the thing is, I feel like the issue is whether or not we're gonna charge more fees to the farmer's market to cover police protection. And I have I have never really seen some roughhousing or anything sort of bad going on there, and it feels, what?
Yeah, it's been
Bad, bad.
Well, Hall, let me, let me give, let me give you a specific example, let me give you a specific
That's not what she's talking about, she's talking more about traffic and
Let me
It's not, it's a issue of traffic, it's a
Yeah.
Right, so, and it's been, and we've had a
When it's traffic
No, it's not real way.
And so one of the questions is, is there something the chief has brought to your attention, to this effect?
Oh, it's, let me just give you a specific example, it's when you have a public, as we've seen from other, think about some incidents that have been on the news,
Just recently.
where there's a large gathering of people and cars, and what do people use the cars for? When there's large gathering of people, I don't wanna really give any, you know, think about cars and people and what people have been, crazy people have been doing recently.
I don't need an answer on this.
Well, if it's, if, if it's that we're looking to extend this contract for two years, and bringing it on the agenda next week, then I, like
I mean, it could be as simple as rolling a baller's sleeve, something like that.
I was gonna suggest we try to quantify what, what that might
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure with that story.
It should be a cost.
But that's not necessarily a farmer's market issue, that was, uh, that was the private, the group that gathered, it was kinda their issue.
It's part of the cost.
That's a, that's a
What?
Well, no, we're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about the New York City unfortunate event.
What? I'm confused. Yeah.
Of course. Well, you got New York City, you also have the
I mean, it doesn't matter what the event is, it's any event, I mean, it's any, any ass gathering.
But I think even, I mean, I think to a certain extent, I don't wanna manufacture
Oh.
Whether you're not
Hysteria, I mean, I think if we have
Hysteria, I mean, I think if we have security concerns, I think it is a different topic than the farmers market topic. And if there is some security concerns from the police that should be addressed
Right, right, no, 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 no.
as it stands to the topic and it probably could happen when the kids are coming out of the park and it's cool, it could happen anywhere.
Yeah, I mean.
So I think if we have security concerns, we need to address the security concerns and.
Well, there.
Yeah, I kind of think if it's an issue like what happened in New York City, right, and we're concerned about the safety of our residents, that's a municipal concern, that is nothing really
Yes.
Right, and that's what it's, and
to do with the farmers market, that could be.
Yeah, that's what I and I were just talking about, which is, and and it had nothing to do really with police protection, it had to do with, you know, um trucks and whether or not, you know, there might be some use of trucks as opposed to just wooden barricades to take and cordon off certain um um arteries of travel.
Got it.
Um, but that requires CDL drivers that I don't normally have on staff, so that's.
That's a good point.
I'm I'm just saying is if there's a if if the chief realizes.
Yeah, you need the driver on the weekend, though, park the car.
On uh, hmm?
Hmm?
You'll need the driver even if you just park the car, yeah.
Yeah, somebody stop her, somebody get it down there.
I get it there, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we even if I I, you know, and I and and the problem is, is I can't preset it because the farmers market needs access so that their um their vendors can take and sell the spot.
Just make them bear the cost.
Well, but that was the question and that's what.
But isn't it a municipal concern, because that concern, anything that you wanna have happen around the Chappaqua trade station falls under the same security concern.
Make them bear the cost.
Well, I think that's her point, is that is it a fee then that we should be passing on to anyone that's trying to utilize that space because it's a it's a new era.
Yes, I I I think so.
Much like at, you know, Chap Pack, we charge them to clean up and to do other things that we know are an issue, we don't give it to them. So it's the same thing here, if they're utilizing the space and we know that for safety purposes, we have to now hire somebody to park these on the weekend to park these trucks for the safety of our citizens.
On the weekend. And move them out of the way. So that might maybe it's a cost that we should be passing through, we should be passing that through. It just ends up being, it's it's not a couple bucks.
The the chief could send a notice to us in writing explaining his security.
Well, maybe come up with some suggestion.
Well, I I don't know, the chief is gonna do that.
But first of all.
No, that's not appropriate.
You have truck, firstly, you have, you have farmers have trucks, I mean, if you wanted, if you want to, if you want to block the entrance, you could we could make it so that they they're required to use one of the trucks to block that.
Exactly.
We don't want that out there, it's security issue. Right. A different kind of truck.
Chief's gonna, if he has a concern, he's gonna wanna deal with it himself.
Right, cause we don't, I mean, it also looks something that could be charged.
I think that that's something we ended up passing through, what's the cost, do we know?
Sorry, just about this part of the time, I wonder what the charge really is.
I I I don't know, I can take, I can take it, figure it out.
Can we find out what the cost is?
Um, because right right now, you know, what we try to do to so that we're only charging a five hundred dollar license fee at the farmers market is, you know, it's my part timers who come in who are hourly employees or I have my, you know, my labor who's low man on the totem pole who comes and he works, you know, he's working at the recycling center and he's doubling over here.
Right.
So I I am doing my best to control costs by bringing in the, you know, the the lowest paid employees to be able to handle that work.
Right.
If you're talking about CDL drivers, all of a sudden we're opening up a whole other level of of pay and.
So can you let us know what that costs possibly?
Yes, yeah, and I just, I, you know, obviously, this is very new and I'm sorry to even have to mention it, but unfortunately, it's the the world we live in and it's, you know, it's a legitimate concern and I just, I I don't know, so that's why I was just trying to.
Because that wouldn't really necessarily affect just the farmers market, that's gonna affect if revs and bev's come in, it's gonna affect the book fair, it's gonna affect anywhere where there's a large gathering of people.
I know. Mm-hmm.
But if it's out of fourteen way in the world, if it's in fourteen way in the world, I think they have to bear or share in that cost.
Correct, right, right, I think it might be everybody.
I mean, ideally, what we would use instead of those, instead of the wooden barriers would be like the concrete jersey barriers, the problem is, is in, I I you can't just move them.
Those, concrete barriers, yeah.
Yeah.
Kids just move them.
Right.
Which is why they're good, but that's why they're bad, they, you know, but, okay.
We have four of them sitting on the side of the train station now.
So let's find out what that would cost, cause it may be something that we now have to charge to everybody who's using a municipal space for a large gathering.
Yeah, and 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 you know, and and the the chief is is, you know, trying to figure out, you know, how how you best, you know, do public safety and not be, you know, killjoy.
There are, like I see by by Trump Tower, though, they do have these temporary, they're like um rolled, they're on wheels, you roll them out and then they 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 have like a panel that opens up and says stop on the front. I wonder if we can like, the town could purchase one of those, we can like deploy it like on a Friday, you know, then when the farmers market's on, they literally, it's like a hydraulic thing pops up
I don't know.
and then at the end of the farm, like Monday morning, they could come and take it out.
Is that stop trucks thing?
It could be the police. Yeah. It would be the police that do it, it's a P W, they're ready working twenty four seven.
That right on fifty six. What's it called? Right.
It's a, I don't know what it's called, it's like a, it's it's like a, it's a unit that they wheel out and then it has like a, you've seen them like in front of the Pentagon and stuff now.
But if it wheels, it's not necessarily there, it's not.
No, and somehow it like secure. That's, but that's the issue also, like this is a separate issue, I mean, it should be the police who are doing this anyway, if it's a police safety concern, why should E P W doing it?
Yeah. No, no, it should be the police, though.
Yeah, but but.
Either way, it's still a cost.
About who we paying.
No, I understand, you have to pay overtime, cause the police are there twenty four seven, you're not paying overtime for them to do stuff like that.
Well, that's, but that's all okay, yeah.
Right, but.
Yeah, but.
So maybe there's something they can buy, the commercial drawing, the S N T S stuff.
The.
I mean, I don't know, but I'll I'll ask the chief.
You're talking about like, it's like a park, like this, like a mirror.
Okay, yeah, find out what the costs are, cause then we may, if it's ten thousand dollars, we may think differently than it's five hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm think it's probably closer to the thousands, but maybe there's grant for it, maybe there's things that we can do, okay, alright, um.
We just.
Well, just throw down spikes about twenty feet more, regress, not a detail.
Jill, you wanna do the resolutions?
Um, yeah, why don't we do the resolutions and we can bring the holler, not holler, no, Sabrina.
With what holler?
Lost holler.
Let's keep on going.
We might take it if I just kind of.
Yeah, it's pretty break soon.
We take a two second break. My son's calling like twenty times or anything.
Should we shut the thing off, shut the thing off?
Just pause.
Ready?
I don't know.
Just wait for a second.
Hit the wipe, I never do it.
I need a different glass, I got it.
I'm not used to my glass.
Alright, um, I move uh to uh hire Keith Scott as a fourth grade police officer with the town Newcastle Police Department, his annual salary is sixty six thousand seven, four hundred seventy one dollars. This appointment is effective December fourth, two thousand seventeen, on the date that the Westchester County Department of Human Resources approved the candidate's resignation reinstatement. This appointment will be contingent upon satisfactory results of medical, psychological examinations, approval of Westchester County Department of Human Resources and completion, pardon me, probationary period of no more than fifty two weeks.
Second.
Well, in favor, I understand why fourth grade doesn't need a police officer, but.
I I move just as above, uh however, with the officer moving to be hired as Joshua David Gabriel Howard, again as a fourth degree police officer pursuant to the same terms as referenced above and same salary.
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
So ready for a quick quiz.
I move to accept the resignation of part time parking enforcement officer Gary Gibbs, retroactively effective December twenty, October twenty fifth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
I moved to hire.
In favor?
Aye.
I moved to hire Edward Luciano as a part time parking enforcement officer with the town of Newcastle Police Department, an annual salary of nineteen dollars an hour effective November ninth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
In favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. And I move to hire Giuseppe Toli as a groundskeeper in the Parks and Rec Department at an annual salary of forty four thousand one hundred and six dollars.
She.
Just now.
This appointment is subject to probationary period of no less than twelve and no more than fifty two weeks, the completion of a medical examination, drug and alcohol screening.
We will.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. I authorize two recreation supervisors to attend the ten, the twenty third annual New York State Recreation and Parks Society Downstate Conference on Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty seventeen. This is an all day conference held in White Plains, the cost of the conference is seventy dollars per person, totaling one hundred forty dollars, second.
In favor, aye.
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 Donnie, how's the payment?
I move to repay the reclaim is about one land, four hundred sixty eight thousand seven, seventy four dollars ninety five cents. Listen on the summary, pre-check writing report in detail, voucher detailed report, both dated November sixth, two thousand seventeen, checks will be issued and mailed to each claim listed on Thursday, November ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
In favor, aye.
Alright, should I start?
Alright, let's talk about Hudson.
Couple matters. Couple preliminary question.
Good.
What does, if a neighbor municipality does something that's going to affect our municipality, why is it incumbent, just even though the dollar amount is not that significant here, why do we have to pay two thousand dollars?
We we don't.
Oh, I remember, we had to pay it.
This is. Do you mind with this project?
Through reading this, yes.
It's a very controversial project.
Well, I have many questions about it.
Yeah, um, it's been a subject of litigation, um, and as I read, it'd be great to have Sabrina here to speak to it, and we will in a second, but as I read her memo, it's in the town's interest to do its own due diligence as an interested agency, it's going through the secret process.
Yeah, that was.
So what if, so so we are, if we go through and we say, hey, we object, then what's our standing to do anything about it?
Really not a heck of a lot, I mean, in terms of trying to, as as an interested agency, you don't actually have any authority to, any approval authority over the project, but you're gonna be impacted by it, that's why you have a a seat at the table.
But if your seat at the table is a voiceless seat, then it's already a seat.
Well, no, because.
I don't give a voice, it's still have any, like, it's what you have with it.
Well, the thing, if my, well, I understand and I don't know much, I mean, I know of the project and it is.
Well, we could potentially.
I need voice, but.
Sue, if 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 there was a significant environmental impact, we could sue them.
Sure, right. Well-funded opposition.
On both sides.
On both sides.
So here here's some, I.
So we could potentially sue them, though, if there's an environmental impact that we identify or any impact as significantly impacting Newcastle.
You need to have damage, really.
Town. I mean, if if, like if we were.
Which they just did completely ignored and didn't address.
If we were unhappy with the outcome of their secret.
We could Article seven, eight, then.
No, 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 if we had a, if we had a real issue, if we.
There is no secret review.
Did they neglect it?
They have it neglect it.
Okay, can you just answer my question? If if we had, because if we're an interested party, that means we're supposed to weigh in because it could impact us, so if there's a significant impact to us that we believe and they just ignore it.
You may have standing, yes.
We would then have standing to do something, yeah.
To to challenge some deficiency in in they.
Right.
So.
Okay, so what, my my understanding is where that, so.
So page four.
Where that project is, is that um
Yeah, I'm.
the developer is claiming no secret review is required. But other people are claiming a secret review is required.
A a full, yeah, yeah.
Full, yeah, yeah. That's not us, that's Portland, right?
That's Portland, right?
No, that's Portland, so that has not been determined at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't get that from their website or any other.
Yeah, no, I know.
But it's been a subject, it was a moratorium, uh that was actually challenged unsuccessfully, there was a federal litigation brought by the developer by a a friend Randy McLaughlin. Um, so it is, yes, so it's hotly contested on on both sides, developer and.
Really? And I did read the memo about the traffic impacts and it's it's really kind of incredulous a little bit. Thirty five trips on our road a day, when you have.
Yes, Sabrina will speak to that, but the idea is that we wanna do our own due diligence.
We want our own.
My my question, my question, I took some notes, so um how how far is the crow fly flies as the sunshine home?
A mile, not even.
So I, so then the follow up question is, are they, I guess, I mean, certainly no scientist for lack of a better term, is it the aquifer and water source that they tap into the same? And when they did their, when they did their um well discharge, and for example, they discussed, it was roughly nine average, there was eight point eight average discharge, would they take into consideration the increased usage at the sunshine home?
Sure.
And if not, how do we say, well, timeout, you're saying that this is a usage and it takes you an hour and a half to refill your aquifer to two hours and a half to refill your well to usable levels? Is that as it is now, because if it is, you're not considering enormous increasing from the sunshine home on those wells.
Based on, based on our sunshine. Re-renew process, in my opinion, they ought to be considering the impact.
So it is, so it seems that, I mean, my reading, it's, it didn't seem like they were, um, because it appears there's gonna be low, there's gonna be already low yielding wells.
Interesting.
And if you add all this additional usage, does that mean that they're gonna be useless wells? I'm making up, I don't know the answer, is it gonna mean that it's gonna take four hours to recharge as opposed to an hour and a half? What does that mean?
Well, Sabrina asked about the additional tests to be done. So we should do that and we should make sure that whatever additional tests that that we're requiring of them, take into account the maximum build out allowable that could be on the sunshine site, so.
And how that impacts based on their numbers, because even even when they talk about, the structures don't change, uh but at the time they were filled before, and I don't know the history of the project,
Yeah, right.
were there ninety two or whatever it was full time residents?
No.
No, there probably weren't, um, how much water did they use then? As opposed to with full time residents, how many vehicles were there then as opposed to with full time residents? The more, the big thing for me was, was if there's concerns of well and sewer, pardon me, septic at sunshine, and this is a mile as a crow flies and they're gonna tap into the same water source, then this study isn't complete to make any determination, oh, come in.
Come on in, we were starting.
So, and um, Ed, can I ask you a legal question, though?
That's.
If we determine that we wanna do our own diligence on this matter, that's to.
Due diligence.
So there, we're gonna, it's gonna cost money, so are we paying that or is that something we can then charge to their developer?
I would need to.
To say.
No, we're paying that.
We're paying that.
Well, Sabrina was gonna ask insofar as the um traffic goes that um there the escrow that uh Crotton would pick up, that we would not be paying.
Portland.
Portland, sorry.
So, um.
That's what I feel like it should be.
Absolutely.
The estimate, so the town of Austining commissioned a traffic study from Frederick P. Clark. In that traffic study, it said that the larger impact would be on the town of Newcastle. I had a conversation with the consultant and he sent me a scope of work for fifteen hundred dollars. I think it is, if the town board feels this way, I think it's appropriate to ask for the town of Portland to collect escrow and pay for the bill for our, for Frederick P. Clark to review.
Absolutely.
And do we have to use Frederick P. Clark?
Well, that's the word.
I found them to be like useless.
That's.
I don't trust their analysis at all.
That's who Austining went with.
Unfortunately, I think.
But it's, but it, we have to go with them?
We could have a separate one, because all of the theater that's come to Newcastle. No, on the road, they're going to pay for a separate one.
Well, if it would cost us here, is I guess, if we're not, we're concerned, we want our own objective third party to do it, then a cost of two grand or fifteen hundred dollars may be worth that.
That'd be sufficient.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I'm a misunderstanding.
No, it's.
Well.
The reason it is so little is because he's already done all the work. And another traffic consultant, it will be much more, because they have to start over from nothing.
Well, when he says he's done all the work, I.
Meaning, he's he's done work for Austining, which included examination for Austining of traffic counts, construction vehicles, everything that he would look at in relation to the applicant's information for Austining. He's already familiar with the project, has looked at the data, so it comes to us at a much.
I think, I guess to a certain extent, I mean, I'll let Jeremy re-ask his question of you, but Crottonville, coming up, you know, uh Old Albany Post Road is not the way that people will enter into that site. And so he may have done it for Austining, but that's coming up Old Albany Post Road.
I know, but he already made a conclusion that based upon what he did for Austining, that we're gonna have the majority of the the ones.
Yes, I agree with you.
The majority of it.
So. And I I read the estimate that you had put in your memo, what he thought it would be, thirty five cars or something like that.
Fifteen hundred.
Hmm?
It was, I think it was great estimate, it was fifteen hundred dollars, not including.
No, no, cars, number of cars.
No, no.
Same cars.
Oh, number of cars, yeah.
And I just find when you have eighty five staff and patients and delivery trucks and laundry service and whatever, just it's not a credible number.
His review is based on the information provided by the applicant, in my review to you, I also listed things that we, more information we need. They make a statement that they will have a shuttle service from the train station, what percentage of their workforce will be coming from that train station utilizing that? You know, they made certain, they made certain, the applicant made certain representations to the town of Portland in this application that they have not based on any fact or provided any background information on, and we need to request that we get that information. You know, that that's the the genesis of the town staff's review of this application was based on the information we received from Portland and asking the questions that we need more information on.
But that sort of proves my point a little bit, like shouldn't Frederick P. Clark have asked for that information? I feel like.
Frederick, we did not hire Frederick.
No, that's what she said, that's what she said.
The one they were doing Austining.
And I'm sure they reviewed it based on what Austining required them to look at. I I I don't know the scope of what they were doing for Austining, I mean, and Austining's perspective may have been very different than our perspective.
Yeah.
You know, we went, I I had conversations with D P W, they provided me with the status of the road condition, what their paving schedule was. If we were to hire a a traffic consultant, I would provide them that information as well, because that impacts what we're doing with our roadway. Do you know what I'm saying? I can't speak to what Austining did or did not do, only that there was a statement in the report that said we would receive the impact, a much greater impact from the traffic as deduced through Austining's study.
Well, I'm all for studying this, but I have no faith in Frederick P. Clark, so.
Yes, I agree.
My heart, um, I, when I was reading this, what concerned me was page three to four on the ground order, and the first thing I asked before was how far is the sunshine home? I understand it's roughly a mile, and as I said also, not being a hydrologist or scientist of any kind, if it's the same aquifer that it's being tapped into and we know based on their own findings that this has the potential to influence our water levels and affect low yielding wells. Um, when they did this study and they made these conclusions, did as to how many gallons per minute, did they take into consideration the build out and potential use at the sunshine home, because if it's on the same aquifer, and again, this is not something I'm familiar with as a science, is it going to affect these wells, is it gonna affect these wells? If so, is this really a fair analysis of replenishing the wells and gallons per minute from those wells?
I can only answer based on the information provided to us and the my under.
I didn't see it here.
Right.
We received a whole box of information, of studies, reports, memos.
So did they take the sunshine home?
I I I cannot answer that, we did not receive, you know, I don't know that I received everything.
So so we need to make, we need to find that out, because
Yeah, well, yes, and that's that's the thing, one thing that that was not provided was a trace analysis between the new wells that the county health department approved for the site and surrounding groundwater wells.
Right.
And you know, your relationship to sunshine is also on the table, is needing more information about. So
And and that that relates also to the septic, uh not, I think it was the septic, yeah, the, yeah, the septic. You know, is the same issues that exist at sunshine that exist at this.
Yes, they were denied water and denied sewer access by Austin.
Because So, you know, raise the other
So, it's not sunshine, you mean?
No, no, this project has been denied water and sewer by Austin.
So how does that impact the Newcastle residents?
And they they deny it with Os- at sunshine too, right? I mean, I'm just thinking, if, I mean, I know this is not gonna happen, but if if just if sunshine was hooked up to Austin water, it would solve so many freaking problems. Wouldn't it? I mean, it would solve this problem too.
Well, whatever it may be, it's, I mean, the issue, it
The health department, the Westchester County Health Department approves the septic systems and approves the drinking water wells. That you know, the the town of Portland does not do that and the town
So the, so we need to find out whether or not, when they came, gave us these numbers, if that includes the build out and accessing use of water at sunshine, if it's tapping into the same aquifer.
We don't know that it's tapping into the same aquifer.
I, that's what I'm asking, yeah, so there's answers, there's questions unanswered.
Yeah. Yeah.
So to a certain extent, if we wanted to be an interested party,
We are interested.
We are interested. We we have already filed for that, okay.
We are not involved, we are interested as a native municipality.
But I Interested.
Can you explain the difference?
An involved, an involved agency has some
Approval authority.
approval authority over the its hold in action.
Uh huh. You have a choice to be an involved agency if you
You either have the authority or you don't.
Okay.
We do, and we don't.
Okay.
So we're an interested agency, because we could be impacted by it.
Uh huh, okay, thanks. And um is there a deadline for your, all your questions and comments to go to Portland?
I was told by the planner in Portland that it is next scheduled to be discussed on December sixth by the town of Portland, by the planning board.
Planning or zoning?
It is the planning board. It was before the zoning board, there was a, I think, a suit or something.
There was a var- and and there an issue with whether something was an area variance or a use variance, very similar issue that we had here. And there was some litigation um that was resolved, uh it was dismissed. The the ZBA there decided that it was an area variance, and now the question is, do they satisfy the criteria for an area variance? That's my understanding.
Right, and so they are currently before the planning board going through the secret process.
So my understanding
Which is why we received information.
Correct, and I thought that if a determination of whether a full environmental review or a negdeck has not been made yet.
Correct, it has not been made yet.
Planning is the lead?
I believe so.
Alright, so we have till December sixth, which is not that long.
And it got out very early. We we have, we should submit a a memorandum to the town of Portland requesting more information and you know, based on this review, based on Jeremy's questions adding to it, I can prepare a draft. If you want to ask them for fifteen hundred dollars to be put in escrow to pay for the traffic consultant, if you
Well, I'm a little with Lisa on this one.
Yeah, but what's it, if they're gonna pay for it unless, do we have standing to ask for a
I guess nothing would prevent us to do another one on the road.
I I I also have to put it out there.
The money.
Right, but either way, we have to pay for it.
The, there's only, there's a handful of traffic consultants.
It doesn't matter what it says, because we're just an interested party.
Okay.
And there there are not that many and
I like, uh, what's it, was John Myers?
John Mazer. Mayor. Mazer. Doctor.
Doctor Collins.
Doctor Collins, sorry, the Mazer consulting, sorry, close.
John Collins.
Well
John Collins, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I I I mean, you know, we can get, I can get a scope and get a cost for a Mazer to look at it.
I think it's, I think it's important, because as I said, the initial estimate that was put in here of thirty-five cars, I just find incredulous.
That's a, that's a powerful passion.
I will say, I will say this about John Collins that day with the Japwood pros when he came before us. There were probably people that wanted to kill him when he showed up that hearing. And by the end of the hearing, everybody was like, listening to like every word. When the Japwood pros in hearings with John Collins.
Let's only hope he was right.
And what
Well, he may, he, I'm not saying he was right, I'm just saying that he was persuasive.
Doesn't have to
Respond to us, dude.
I think it's a little, he's a little freaking annoying, I think.
But no, I know, I I know.
Well, do you wanna find out how much an independent
We have to put out a request for proposals.
Okay.
But the time, the time
But then
We don't, we don't have time, we're
The timing is
But it maybe, but again
How you gonna do that? You may be stuck by default by having to go in.
I'll take this up to you on a separate note, but there needs to be especially in these areas where, you know, you sit here at the four corners, up that cul-de-sac is Portland, over here is Austin,
It's in the triangle.
over here is Newcastle, and over there is Yorktown.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, at the four corners. Um the roads are, you know, if I if I don't know if you've ever been there, but the roads are fine, we may have just repaved them, but you know, they're freaking dangerous and um I think that it's not like you're going on a state road or a county road or anything. It's infrastructure of that particular area was designed for low density. I mean, it's just the way it is, it's windy roads and can't see around corners and I I just kind of feel that um maybe there's some kind of, maybe you can look and see if there's some kind of way that you know, we can ask the town of, collaboratively work with the town of Portland to have them make that part of their formal request, so it becomes part of the developer's responsibility. I mean, is there, there there has to be a way to make that happen.
I can speak to Sabrina about trying to make that happen.
Alright, so I think we have to leave this by saying we're not gonna have time to put out an RFP.
But there's a consensus that you want
No, but the RFP can come after.
I think it does have to be studied.
Has to be studied, right.
Yeah, that, I think, it's an agreement, but it may have to be by default just due to timing.
Right.
But I think it would
Well, I would like them to pay for it.
You could maybe talk to the lawyer for Portland, because there needs to be a process to have this in place, and it almost seems like it's it's logical.
I can take a deeper dive, I mean, I'm following it from afar, but I can start talking to people, sure.
And I'll try and find out more, because I'm not as up to speed on this, as I should be, probably.
And if, what if the the people had chickens straddling the town lines?
Wait, we have, what happens when the chickens cross the town lines? Whose property do they become?
Okay, so on that note.
So is the board gonna wanna see a draft letter?
Ah, yes, I am thinking wanna see a draft letter.
Yes, please, yes.
So we need to
And I think it needs to be as, you know, forceful, not sort of like uh these are the little requests we want to view, I think it's gonna sort of piece uh about the impacts to that area, need to be a little more aggressive.
Sort of.
So I don't see
Okay.
Alright, so let me just, we
Fine, alright.
For this
That's good.
Guys, thank you, first of all, I wanna start off by thanking you for doing this, what an interesting design.
Well, you're welcome.
We've had a lot of meetings, so this, there's a lot of work, please.
I think you're, you're done with the other meeting?
No, we wanted to be here just to
Okay.
So this is the proposal for the signet, uh you can see the site plan you have on the front of you, sort of uh this corner of uh entrance to Bell.
Working.
And what is this, Greeley Street?
South Greeley. South Greeley.
Yeah, South Greeley corner. So this is what you're looking at, at
This is what it calls with the last station, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, it's one of the Best of places.
I wish our trees looked that good.
What do you say?
Oh, well.
Those tree may have to come down, but this is just for, you know.
Yeah.
And then we will have
There's a tree that's dead over there, right?
No, no, it was already removed.
Oh, it was removed, right?
Yeah, it was very dangerous, yeah.
Back, yeah, the big one was already moved, but then we are intending to do landscaping in front, and this is shown like flat,
Uh huh.
but in reality, it is sloping down, as you can see, where we're gonna put at the front part corner will be two feet of the retaining wall, those, you know, stone with any rim.
So it's a stone wall and it's fine.
But as
It's hard. It's a
Goes backwards, it's gonna
It'll grow, yeah.
Yeah, so it will grow in height, so
Go with the base.
The base. We just
Let's just, let's just cover the basics of the
Yeah.
of the setup, right?
So it's two face
Well, also, please, please
Ninety degree.
Please take a step back one second, just for some of the other preliminary work, I think what you guys are trying to do, this, we've had a number of meetings.
Okay. That's right.
We looked at Bell School, you know, with the the brick, I mean, I'm not, just like you said, you're not a
The brick in the stone, yeah. Stone, yes.
you're not a hydraulist, it's, I'm not a architect, but they looked at the stone and copper, so they tried to incorporate some of the elements of Bell School's design.
Copper roofing and
Right.
And the streetscape elements, yeah.
Right.
And the streetscape element.
Right, right.
So what are, what are the, what's this material, what's it made of?
It's all metal, really.
So
Oh, it's
Anid, dark bronze, anidized aluminum facing around the structure.
Sure.
And then
And a metal roof?
Well, majority is black, because that's what you
And a copper roof.
With a rascene copper roof?
Copper?
Copper, rascene copper roof.
Real copper, real ro- real copper?
Yeah, really.
Yeah, real copper.
Got to be a bronze.
And then stone base and a stone cap on that.
Yeah.
And that's all tying those elements into existing elements in the streetscape.
What you have streetscape. Yeah, that's what you have selected.
It ties it into
Oh, I think it's beautiful.
Yeah.
I actually felt it sort of was not like that, but it reminded me of a train station a little bit.
Yeah, that's a good reference too.
And then one of the questions I had, cause I just can see it, is I can see people just sitting on this thing, is this a sitting wall, like it's
Not intended, what we're gonna do is do a garden, like a landscape area around this.
Planetary map, yeah.
So people can't touch it, so
So like a barrier, just like
Oh, so you don't want people going in
Correct.
Not necessary.
Because you lean against the screen, if you sit there and
But
Yeah, the electronic, yeah.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, but screen is sound like easily replaceable by panel system, so it's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it's expensive.
It's expensive.
Yeah. We'd like not to do that, we're picking roses for those or something, we don't want those.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look pretty, but no, seriously, that just are
You could even do a little low scale fence around the outer edge on the sidewalk side, sort of
Just to, yeah, visually, like maybe eight inches kinda things, you know.
Or just to encourage, discourage.
Yeah, yeah, just
Discurse people walking up there, but I think if you plant
Oh, cause I was looking at this, I'm going, I'm so
No, they're middle school kids, right?
Sitting right there.
Yeah.
I don't know that the little fence is gonna discourage them.
Middle school kids. Now, I mean, the 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 pans themselves are very, you know, durable.
Pretty little poisonous?
But then I can notice that's the fact.
And they, these go in schools all the time, and obviously chapter four of the school district is even
But Got to be less
At Greeley entrance.
Doing them, so uh they're 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 durable, uh they're replaceable in panel sections.
Right.
This is basically four pixel panels high, eight pixel panels long.
That's true.
And so, you know, they're roughly twelve inch square, a little smaller, but roughly twelve inch square panels that they just interchange if there's you know, bulbs that come out, so, but they're very confident in terms of the durability of this kind of system at a hand level reachable level.
Yeah.
How do you feel about the scale, like this eight sixes, that's a big, this is a big decent sized structure?
It's a, it's a, it's it's decent size, but it's the, you know, that's
Yeah. And we like to use, we can say, keeping with this
Does it block the view, does it block the view of looking each way on
Obviously, it's
Well How how much taller is it from the mockup that's out there right now?
No. Yeah, the mockup out there right now is about the same height as as this sign.
I think To the top of this sign itself.
And now it's a big roof line, right?
Then we have that roofing structure.
There's a roof line on it.
Yeah, no, so but and that's real, actually, those are
No, I guess, not only is it big, I I, don't get me wrong, I think it's great, I'm just giving you a rule.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So not only, like, not only is it big, but you know, you have this sign that's gonna be, I mean, they're really bright, you know, so this is gonna, you know, this is a major thing that we're putting out there. And I I agree with it, I just think that, you know, it's gonna, like, you know, remember, now I can speak freely. Remember when the 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 bank was painted white and then we went to uh the brick color orange?
Orange.
Adobe.
And and you remember how residents freaked out, so this is good, and you know, I was, and I was involved in that actually, now I can speak freely, it's like I, like I'm set free. So um the, so putting this, you know, this is a big, I I think it's great, but I think it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna take the residents a whole time to get adjusted to it.
Is this expected coloration?
It was gonna be probably sorts of information.
No, I
Oh, no, 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 that's
Colors
No, I'm with you on the the sign, I'm just saying
Yes, sign can be any color, they can change everyone, everyone
You think I I, and I, we should do it, don't get me wrong, I'm just thinking of scale, you know, height.
Yeah, good.
I think we approved the size, is there a reason, I mean, I mean, does the, since it is such a bright sign, does the scale of the actual physical screen
I know, and that's actually One reason for it, we did the
need to be as big as this?
That was recommended, yeah, that's why we
That's the one you're buying.
No, no, I understand that, but I think from a
Oh, you're saying the graphics on it.
The Right.
Yeah, you, as far as I know, you can totally control all the graphics, so
Yeah, you can control that.
Yeah, uh by computer.
You can make it bright blue, bright green, or you can do bands and dark and
It's made to get dimming.
Any colors you want, yeah, you can dim all that.
And then two other, two other observations, the stonework, so in the streetscape, what we do with the stonework is we mimic the stonework from the bridge.
Yeah.
But I know Bell is obviously different than the bridge, so that's just food for thought, honor our
Right, and then, right.
What what are you using for streetscaping, that's, that's what you're doing, okay, so that's what we are applying here as well, stone cap.
We're doing, we're doing the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, and and then, yeah, and then the only other thing is that um the members of the streetscape committee, and this might be a good thing, and I heard that, you know, we we obviously we wanna honor your hard work on this and incorporate some type of plaque into it, obviously. But the, I guess, the the members of the streetscape
Every other, every other sign.
Absolutely, I thought the whole sign was, I thought the whole sign was just gonna have your name on it. It's gonna be
Sign, he's paid architect.
For an architect. Twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of the lower quadrant is is always gonna be your end, sorry, your picture. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to also incorporate like a plaque for the streetscape committee and the town board there.
That that faces about a foot and a half high at the the front end, it's uh
You think it's high enough?
I think your front end is
Yeah, you know, bros, if we're not gonna
Yeah, no, I don't know if that would be
It's about two and a half feet.
I
Maybe on the sea.
Put it on the city area.
I was locating this circle sort of things, which is about the nine inch diameter. That's, I was thinking maybe logo kinda things.
Well, that'd be nice, yeah.
Well, that's
Yeah.
No, that's
Logo for, you know, this town of Newcastle.
Yeah. Right, so someone will be
A beaver.
The county council of the
Is it?
I, it's an, doesn't our logo have a beaver?
Yes.
It would be a beaver, even if it wasn't that, but it's the actual animal itself, there's so many cute little beaver bones.
Well, we have that, we have that, we have that, we have that uh
We have the seal of Newcastle.
Seal here.
Yeah, the seal of Newcastle would be nice.
Do Once you get
More to do the, in the bronze, you know.
Once you go through the the uh value engineering phase, the cost estimating phase, I'm sure you'll have different ideas of how much decoration to put on it.
It looks like a lot like the roof line, the decoration on the sign in Marion Place, but it's made out of a different material.
Yeah.
That's copper.
Yours is better, yeah, but it's, it looks a lot like that.
Alright, right.
But yes, there's copper too.
So, and this isn't gonna block any sightlines?
No, that's why people were that, yeah.
No, it's It's, it's a setback.
Yeah, I thought it would cheer people, look at it on the door, and
Yeah. Yeah, no, I see that.
Yeah, Bob Sciolli's been involved in
So can I just ask a quick question, only because um Jerry Michelle happened to mention to me that he thought that the angle should be well, hour a little bit, is there?
Okay.
More than ninety?
Yeah, is there something that that like
Not, no specific thing, you know, ninety degrees gives you forty-five, you know, sort of a forty-five degree angle to fall side.
Coming and stuff like that, yeah, I'm curious as to what he was like thinking about twinkie, twinkie.
The more you Alright, the more you flatten it out,
The harder it is to see.
traffic coming from both sides are gonna be looking at it more obliquely.
I see, right.
Yeah.
Got it, yeah.
Yeah, so I would think forty-five is kind of the most you would wanna
Is is the optional, okay.
But don't think, we also wanted to be seen from people exiting the train station.
Yes, they should, yes, very much so.
They would, they would have more of the direct view of it even, something there.
That's cool.
I think it really is a key spot, and and also it was our hope that although this may be a little bit larger than than what people are used to seeing,
Yeah.
that it would cut down on the, you know, the clutter at the triangle that we are always trying to manage, and we just never seem to be able to, and
Right, it's a, this is a high profile place.
You know, the the banners are, that, you know, go across South Greeley are wonderful, but if you look at those telephone poles, they're going like this, and when we get new poles replaced, I don't know that Con Ed is gonna tolerate us touching them again, um as is, they're not very happy with us being up there.
Right, you'd also have like happy birthday to like
Yeah, there's also certain things we can do, yeah, that would be really cute.
To who?
Red Day.
Like at the county center, everyone can have a day.
You could have a day. A day.
In terms of overall scale, I'd say, we can work on details, like for instance, the columns are ten inch square, right? So maybe we can make those eight or seven, kind of try to work to
But I think this is ten is good proportion to the width of
Then let me just say, we can work on the scale thing, and it's
Yeah.
And I know that the scale is, like, when the signs are the signs, but the roof line is maybe just a little too
Yeah.
A little bulky.
Yeah, so we could try to pull those things in and and and
Yeah.
How, so how how much higher does the roof extend above the sign?
Put there.
So
It's right here.
Yeah, so if you look at it
So it's not
It's nine sixes.
Like this is six foot person, and I just didn't wanna anybody to hit their head if they are by any chance close to them, so
The roof line looks bulky.
I wanted to at least have seven feet clearance at the bottom.
Uh huh.
I mean
I I actually don't think the roof line looks bulky, I think it kinda looks in proportion with the structure.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so too, yeah.
Um and I think having that there just to sort of keep some of the rain and things off the screen, it looks like you have enough kind of a
Yeah. Little overhand to, yeah, yeah.
Little of an overhand to kind of like not have too much water hit it, make it overly glistening, yeah.
Yeah, for ice coming over, yeah.
Make sure the stone cap is like a real blue stone cap, like not like anything
You did a nice job.
Yeah, right, yeah, the rendering came out like more like concrete, obviously, but
Yeah, this this, yeah, this was
The idea is, it's a, it's a blue stone
Yeah, this one would be lovely.
We're doing blue stone on the streetscape.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what, how how thick is that, like four inches or?
And it's like Bed. Uh, well, no, it's it's, no, we didn't do like that, uh, no, it's the patio, it's not, we don't have any, 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 the caps, I don't think, I don't know if we have a blue stone cap.
Oh. Okay. What's the cap, I think it was the regular stone that you're using.
Alright, absolutely.
It's a regular stone, it's not
Yeah.
Regular stone on the walls, what the 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 is
Like six inch?
The public area.
The public areas are blue stone.
Oh, okay, so what can I sit down?
Well, it's stone walls that you can sit on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the caps on the stone walls and up
I don't know if they, blue stone or just stone, I think they're just stone.
Local stone cap.
Okay, so regular
So you want the stone on this side?
No, it's nice.
I like that chisel.
Yeah, the the, now the rendering makes it look like it's one big block, right?
But it's not gonna be.
Obviously, it's two legs.
It's the same, it's the same, it's gonna be what's out there now, the mockup as far as the angle.
Yeah.
You don't really get the feel from this, uh because it's a picture.
Because it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And we could have made it really small in rendering and you'd say, wow, that looks too small.
And make sure you spec the, my my observation, I will, I will, and then with the copper, make sure you spec it without the, you know, like the veneer on it, so it gets the patina.
The patina, right.
Yeah, well, we we will make sure that any metal we're using will not rust or have some any difference, this, we don't wanna, you know,
Yeah.
destroy any of the digital element.
Right.
So what is this gonna cost to build also?
I mean, I know you're not building, you don't know
Well, I mean, that's a
That's, that's
That's a cost engineering part, so
It's gonna be a lot. It's gonna be a lot.
We need to.
So here, there's a there's a process, there's a process question to to talk about, you know, I mean, as an architect, the next thing
We're splitting with.
The revenue, penny, penny.
Yeah.
the client would say is, well, how much is it gonna cost and we would be involved in bidding it, yeah.
Because we have no budget, so tell me how much we can do.
It would be expensive.
We would we would need to get contractors to look at it and put numbers together, which we could do next and but I would imagine any of the contractors have to be uh, you know, um prevailing wage, all that fun stuff, you'd have to you'd have to bid it out.
Most fully used to doing this kind of thing.
You have to do our picks.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, this is so way more than thirty, this is about a four, three, fifty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be bid.
Okay.
Well, we bought the site.
But in terms of, in terms of this one, in terms of budgeting it, so you would wanna know.
I think great.
Nice site, nice.
Mm-hmm.
We have the common loan is probably eight to eight to ten thousand dollars, so.
Yeah.
We all thought it our money.
We would wanna know what the budget, right? I don't know, you would wanna know what the budget, so we could still find, you know, on our own, kind of get a couple of contractors to give us
rough estimates for it, so we know where the numbers before you go to the R F P process.
It's probably a good idea.
Now, I'm assuming it's a cinder block structure for the wall with a veneer.
Yes, right, a veneer on it, yeah, exactly.
So I I don't, you know, I I I think.
And the anodized aluminum.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, all that dark metal would be anodized aluminum around a steel structure, yeah.
Dark metal. So, but okay, that was the question, right?
But still, yeah, already prefaced, yeah, Nick, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, one way is one way is.
And the shell.
It's a steel. Is it cheaper at all if it's the school board that builds it as opposed to Bell?
Structure. Well, for us, that would be much cheaper, but.
No, 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 I'm I'm no, 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 so um.
I I know.
You know what I mean in terms of, do they have the same requirements we do?
Yes, they 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 do, but I as I was just commenting to Ed that um although the fabrication of the metal is clearly something we could not do in house, um you know,
Yeah. Or the base, yeah.
we have we have craftsmen on staff, the school district.
Walter could build this in a in on his sleep.
Um and I I don't know if you noticed, but Bell School just happened erected a new uh stone um sort of frame for their new Bell field. They almost they did that in house, they have they have people on staff that did it.
They do that in house?
Oh, yeah.
So what I was curious about is if we can get, you know, construction drawings, I could then pass it through my my staff, John, give
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Sure.
you know, share with John Chow, because the school district is gonna have to approve this as well.
Yeah. Right.
Um and just see, you know, how much we could take and actually do the labor in house and see if we could just control costs a little bit that way.
In house. Yeah, yeah.
So you think you have the school district logo on one thing and the town district logo on the other one?
I mean, we have like one, two, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On 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 paddles?
No, no, they're on these little circles.
On circles.
Six, six, six circles.
Lower circles.
I don't think the circle is gonna be too small, I would.
There's a six circles, so.
I think the.
I like you too, by the way.
Yeah.
The back the back edge of this, the grade's gonna slope away, so the back edge is gonna be about three feet tall of that stone veneer.
You're not gonna see it.
Or more.
So I think a, you know, inset panel, you got two legs, so you could do one on one leg and one on the other is whatever you wanna do, a little inscribed panel on it, but I think that would make more sense than trying to.
That could be fun, yeah, I know, lower.
Putting the metal.
But they might have some Newcastle logo itself, I think that.
Well, one more thing to consider is, uh you know, when this when this process started, we approached the Greeley boosters, because you know, they're removing their sign.
Right.
So they they are, they're actually part of this too, I mean, they're not contributing to the cost, but they are they are cooperating. Cause they are, you know, they basically are saying, yeah, we'll remove our sign, well, they're gonna be beneficiaries, but they're also removing their sign. Because we're not gonna have two signs right next to each other, and they they're gonna be putting stuff on this, you know, just announcements, you know, it's not a big deal, type it in.
Yeah. Yes.
But maybe if there's a spot for their logo too, we should consider that.
Yeah, okay. Um the school district has to accrue, right, so we're just gonna be, yeah, totally, right.
肯定会, yeah, as far as the.
Jill.
Jill.
School district. In terms of, is the next step to get it through the school district in terms of their blessing?
Um yeah, so um thinking I I we may share with Bob Schenkel of the A R V who also sat on the streetscape committee, just to, you know, another set of eyes, and then, yeah, it would need to be approved by the school board as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Um and so, you know, I would just take any suggestions from, you know, Bob as far as he's so intimately familiar with the streetscape that it seems silly not to
Yeah.
um you know, use him to bounce it off of, I mean, it's beautiful, and then, yeah, it'll have to be approved by the school board.
We should have the cost first, I mean, there's no reason to approve something if you don't know the cost. You know what I'm saying, I mean.
Right, so maybe what we could do is just work on the materials or, you know, and if you can just give me some drawings, because
Yeah. Yeah.
as I said, I really think a lot of this, the metal fabrication we're gonna have to go out with, but the other stuff, I think we can do it in house.
Right. Yeah, okay.
You know, we, you know, Dan was running the electrical, there's gonna be a cost sharing for the um
Yeah.
uh the the wiring fees that Con Ed is gonna charge us as far as running the conduit out to the new light, because what's there now doesn't doesn't work, it's gonna have to be run off a new pole. Um you know, just stuff like that that we're just moving along to, alright, so um.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll get we'll flesh out a more detailed drawing and then get that to you and.
So if you don't. Yeah, so i- is this an estate that um is proper for me to share with Bob Schenkel, or do you wanna tweak it first or?
Uh we're gonna tweak it, okay, yeah.
Let's tweak it a bit and then do another, a little more detail in terms of the materials and how it gets constructed, and I think that would help him see
Okay. Okay.
clearly what the parts are.
What this, yeah, and the fact the mockups there is gonna be very helpful.
Yeah. Just trying to make it not too commercial and more country.
Country, okay, what do you, what?
Country, I'm just worried about the anodized aluminum that is too Disney world, you know.
Yeah, more delish.
Hey, particularly. Okay.
Oh, I don't know, anodized aluminum is fabulous, it's sure.
It's very commercial.
So the, but so we have to do, here, let me just say.
I don't like quite true.
Make it as free.
Yeah.
I I know what it is, I I think it.
Hold on, hold on, we have to do steel structure to support the sign and the roof, but.
Anodized.
Anodized aluminum, it's shiny brown metal.
Yeah, it's like your window panel, like.
Well, no, it's a it's actually a matte, it is.
That's exactly what that is right there.
Like a window frame, right?
It's like in the middle of this trap, this is anodized right there, it's a trap.
It could be any color, yeah, it could be any color.
Right, well, here, so the issue is we have to have steel posts.
It's very commercial.
Inside, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We have to have steel posts supporting it, so either we e- expose the steel and paint the steel, so you have a black steel
Right.
It does look very.
Right.
or, you know, whatever colored, you know, structure, or we cover the steel in aluminum.
Mm-hmm.
And you can't do it out of some kind of wood material.
Well, yeah, what about wood or like um they make all the mail locks posts now out of um.
Well, he's been like a perfect years, yeah.
Yeah.
Azak.
Oh.
Yeah, Azak or something like that, that's much more.
Yeah.
And we can fabric.
But it's not that, I mean, it, well, I guess no one's touching it, so.
You can paint it.
Yeah.
We can build it on your.
Yeah, A A you can't do Azak in dark colors, that the material is a plastic and you can't paint Azak dark.
There's no other wood.
They're using metal, like Alated metals, painted, yeah.
You can't.
See, that was that, you can't paint it dark.
Yeah.
You can't paint it dark, so if the if the goal was that it has a dark color to it, the the frame and everything, it that can't be Azak or any of those.
I think it's black color, it's already determined.
Oh, the streetscape furniture is black.
Yeah, so we will be using black.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no wood on the streetscape.
No wood.
Okay.
And I would think, I I would think you would wanna.
We're just gonna use something a little softer than the, you know.
The investment I think you want is the longest term material that was, like the train station, right, look how long it take took the train station to start looking crappy because of all the wood, the dark stained wood just.
Can you change the roof?
Right.
Of course, we can change the roof.
We don't want to look, right.
Somebody can change the material of the roof.
Yeah.
Maybe incorporate some stone, or something.
Well, it could be any color you want.
It loses it pretty quickly, so, it's better off steel, net still metal.
Maybe lighting underneath here, maybe.
Yeah, cause it, oh, that's.
But it, oh, maybe it's too dark.
So the choice of you expose the steel in a covered.
Well, this is actually, it's it's true, this is all trash, just like the, you know, over there, but it wasn't drawn.
Color will break up the brand.
Yeah, right, right.
Oh, matching.
Yeah.
It'll blind you there more than like when you first put it in, it's totally all airy around, surround you and then also.
Yeah.
Color will put it up a little.
Right.
And and anodized too, but can give it kind of a.
Can you put sure, make up a texture or?
Yeah, you can give it kind of a matte texture, so that it doesn't, it's not reflective and.
Yeah.
Can't tell for the.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Alrighty, alright.
What about something?
Okay, okay, so can you just give me like a timeframe on when do you think you'll get the tweaks back to me, so I can because I I'd like to be able to just alert the school board as to
Yeah.
when it's coming, I know the guys are already starting on the electrical stuff that's on their their, you know, radar, they're gonna start doing it.
You know the electrical wise requirement, right, on the back two corners at the ends, that's what.
Yes. Um. I believe so, but I will pass this on to Jerry um and Dan, because he's gonna be overseeing the electrical, doing the electrical, so yes.
Because they show that in the back of the spec.
Huh, Jill. End of next week.
That's it, that's definitely gonna notice it, boom, it first, first, maybe.
Oh, fine, perfect, great, not a problem.
Yeah, sort of this drawing we have here and.
Okay, this is fabulous, I I it's, I think we're fine, very excited.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's it's been so nice to see you come along.
No, I I I had a I had a dot, what is it again?
Anodized aluminum.
And you use what you suggest.
I'm gonna have to Google, I'm having your picture, it's it's.
It's an amazing, it's a amazing.
And and next meeting be like, I'm not an anodized.
End of next week.
Plastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Right, good night.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You get to uh.
I get to be drives me.
You get to go back to the real world.
You might be the luckiest of all.
Yeah, I know, right?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice chat, bye.
Right, thank you.
Are we are we finished?
Okay, I think we're done.
And it's, do you have to do any further minutes?
No, they just get approved next time, that's it, it's just really gonna pass.
Before you go, I just wanna know if we have a follow up at all or anything, we started with Chief in reference to Washington Avenue, who's gonna look at it, wasn't he? In terms of access and that, regress to the train station.
It gets two ways.
Oh, you mean that way. Yeah, um.
Yeah, and then and then the other issue was, I reached, I'd spoke with Nick, and I thought he was gonna bring it up with you, I don't know if he did, just again about discussing with someone about moving the um the county, about possibly moving the bus stops on one seventeen, both by Annandale and by Whipple Wall.
No.
You didn't bring it up to the board, just.
No, we brought it, no, we've already discussed it before about moving the bus stop, getting rid of the, pushing back with the school on the Whipple Wall intersection. We discussed it twenty two times.
Um oh, at the Whipple Wall Street?
Yes, yes, it's the I'm referring to, the bus stop is there, the the jutting.
Yes. Corner.
Corner is there, not corner, we're not talking about the land, it comes out, so I just wanna know what we're doing and so that when it comes time when a separate refill is ready, that we're not first asking the county if they're willing to do it, the school district if they're willing to do it. So you follow me, moving, we we started the conversation with the school district about allowing us to push back on the on the land there, so it's not obstructed.
Okay.
At Whipple Wall one seventeen.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Discussing with the county about the two bus stops, because we were told that they didn't wanna move them before, I think, because they don't wanna have them have them drive into Chapel Crossing, isn't that why the county didn't wanna move the bus stops, wasn't it?
I don't know, I think we should determine, especially the one by Annandale, what's going on over there.
Both of them needs, but both are probably gonna have to move at some point.
Right, but it may be that there should be like a etch, a cut in or something.
Whatever, maybe, the point was we should start trying to have that conversation and not waiting until the last minute, so we can just make sure we have the right people to speak to.
You know, I think um I think maybe I'll call into Ed Goff, New York State D O T, he was so tremendously helpful with the um the wood D O T yard.
I think.
Either way, did you see?
It's so problematic there right now with cars coming out of Chapel Crossing and making the left by the light and coming out of Annandale.
It's fabulous.
Hundred percent, both those spots. It's a nightmare.
It's a nightmare.
We have to discuss.
Those three intersections cannot all be open, it's 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 scary.
So we just gotta, I figured we I we should get it back on the table, just so we can make sure something starts to move in one direction or another.
Okay. Got it.
Alright. Now that it's not a roundabout again, it's it's scary up there.
Alright, that's it, I move to second.
Passion to it, you're. Okay.
No favor.
Alright.
Hi.